First thing we'll do tonight is our Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Huffaker. Will you lead us, please?
It's my honor. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Huffaker. Okay, so we'll do roll call, and it looks like we have all city council members here tonight through the thick snow. Thank you, everybody. At this time, we'll do a citizens' comment period, which will provide opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any matter, including terms on the agenda. We don't have any public hearing items, so we ask that you state your name and address for the record and come on up in now three minutes, please.
Someone's gotta go. Paul Schmidt. So, I mean, the only thing that I'm a little curious on is that we don't seem to have any garbage collection competition in the city. And, you know, our current company just continues to ratchet things up. I mean, you know, now they charge at one of our rentals just to move the garbage can over so they can pick it up. You know, and, and I always kind of felt a little bit like, you know, the city gets eighteen percent or something on that number, I think. Is that right? On the utilities, like for garbage collection?
I actually don't know, but go ahead, keep, keep going and we'll...
I think it's like eighteen percent or something like that. And I always kind of felt like, you know, the more we pay, the more you get to collect. And I'd like to see a collective way of trying to put some pressure on them to not just continuously raising rates and decreasing service. You know, you used to be able to put out whatever you wanted, and now they, you know what I mean? It's, most places you have a competitive situation where you have a few choices. I don't know if we can get that. I mean, they own the dump, so it's a little difficult. But I don't know if anyone's ever brought it up, but it's just something that I think about on occasion because, you know, we have some rentals and everything just continues to escalate, and we try to keep our rents as reasonable as we can, but it's difficult, you know, with everything just continuing to go up. So, one other thing, and I don't know if you guys have talked about it yet, but I know we have those eight-year property tax abatements for anything over, I think it was five units. Are you re-looking at that? Because I had talked to Frank and some of the other council members, and it seems like no one's taken the, you know, affordable housing twelve-year deal, but we've got so many units that have been built and being built, and the stuff that's built is the most expensive stuff in town. So, you know, so is the idea to just create so many things that it drives the cost of everything down? Because, you know, the rentals we own, we don't get any property tax abatements. You know, and I said to Frank, I said, "Where's my help?" You know, so I don't know if you guys have talked about that, if you're thinking about making it only on affordable housing, which I'm all in for. I mean, I want more affordable housing for people, but it feels like that eight-year deal is just icing on the cake for people who are gonna build them anyway. So, any comments on that? I mean, have you guys...
Yeah, Paul, yeah, Paul, at this time, what we're, what we're gonna do, we actually are very fortunate. The person that used to, we have some employee that used to work for the Wenatchee Waste Management, yeah, and it's a negotiation time. So, I'm gonna get your information and then have them contact you. As far as, and I know we've been working as a city council for the eight-year, twelve-year, and going through that process. So, yeah, I'll have, I'll have a couple people... Yeah. Perfect. All right, thanks, Paul. Okay, thank you. Okay. Three minutes, and I think we have anybody online for our three minutes, I think, for the public record? Anybody at all? Okay. We'll go to, let's see, consent item.
Your Honor, I move to approve the agenda vouchers and amendments from previous meetings. Also to move to accept the work performed by the contractor JM Pacific Construction Incorporated for the sidewalk panel replacement project number SW twenty-two dash zero six, and further authorize the city administrator to sign the final contract voucher certificate, and move to accept the work completed by the contractor Rudneck and Sons LLC for the South Wenatchee Safety Improvements Project, Project Number nineteen-eleven, and authorize the city to administrator to sign the final contract voucher on behalf of the city of Wenatchee.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Harold and seconded by Councilmember Quavas from previous meetings to accept the work performed by the contractor JM Pacific Construction Incorporated for the sidewalk panel replacement project number SW twenty-two dash zero six, and further authorize city administrators sign, city project number nineteen-eleven, authorized city administrators sign the final contract voucher on behalf of the city of Wenatchee. Any discussion?
Not a discussion, just a comment. The work performed by JM Pacific Construction was much appreciated.
Anybody else? All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed, motion pass. All right, acta item, let's see. Purchase and sale agreement for the Wenatchee Foothills Regional Recreation Area. David?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Detective Parks and Recreation Director for the city. This evening, I'm requesting the approval of a purchase-sale agreement for the Gordanier property in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, five-hundred dollars, and this is for the Wenatchee Foothills Regional Recreation Area project. This project's been underway since, well, actually, since before 2020, but it really kicked off in 2020 when we applied for the state grant to help finance the project. It's to acquire, the overall project is to acquire three different parcels of property, two of which we acquired in 2022. What you have tonight is the final, the third piece of the puzzle. So, this will wrap up that project with the acquisition. The property itself was appraised at four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. Let me flip my page here real quick. And the Schlang Douglas Land Trust will be providing the bulk of the match for this acquisition. So, the city's cost is two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, five-hundred dollars. Fortunately, we have five, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and eighty-two cents remaining in the grant, plus an additional ten-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and eighteen cents in additional match that's in our state match bank. So, the, kind of, the mechanics of it is that we submit a billing through the state, then the state cuts a check to the escrow company, escrow company cuts a check to the land trust to purchase the property, and then we're, and we're good. So, it actually doesn't run through the city budget. It runs through, from the state through the escrow company out there. If approved, the acquisition would close the end of February, and the project itself would be completely wrapped up by the end of May with all the grant paperwork and everything else that we have to do. The property itself is nineteen point seven-eight acres, and it's on the west side, excuse me, the east side of Saddle Rock, so kind of on the face that you see from town. Would that answer any questions you might have?
It's always nice to have grant money.
It is, yeah.
And then, at the beginning, you mentioned three different parcels, and this is the third one?
Yep, this is the last one. So, we acquired the other two mid-year last year. And those, in your agenda report, there's a map that shows the highlighted, all solid red, that's the one that we'd be acquiring here. The ones that are outlined in red are what we acquired last time.
Any other questions for David?
Just one quick question, David. I know some projects come with problems. So, are we purchasing a problem child here, or stormwater issues, anything like that?
No, the only thing that we found through, so we did the due diligence, we did the cultural resources assessment, the phase-one environmental assessment. The only thing that those came and found was one potential historic site on the property, and it's not gonna impact the trail uses and open space use that we have planned.
All right, thank you. With that, Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the purchase-sale agreement for the Gordanier, did I say that right? Property in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, five-hundred dollars for the Wenatchee Foothills Regional Recreation Project twenty-dash-one-four-four-six-A and authorize mayor sign.
Second.
Go for it.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Hornby and seconded by Councilmember Atkinson. All right, buddy. For city council to approve the purchase-sale agreement for the Gordoner property in the amount of two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, five-hundred for the Wenatchee Foothills Regional Recreation Area Project twenty-dash-one-four-four-six-A and authorize the mayor to sign. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those approve?
Aye.
All is opposed, motion pass.
Thank you.
Thanks, I know it's a lot of work, and I can't tell you how much, just being on the city council in the past, how much you knowledge to get us grants to, to do this, and I, it's just nice to, for you to continue to do that. It really is a, I know it's appreciated by everybody up here.
Thanks.
I mean that, truly. Thanks, David.
Tammy's got the agreement for you to sign, and then we'll get it down to the land trust for their autograph afterwards.
Thank you. All right, Alyssa Schaefer, more good news.
Good work. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Alyssa Schaefer, Facilities Manager for the Public Works Department. Back in December, the construction contract between the city and Hallmy Builders was awarded for the third-floor renovation of the, for the Attorney General's office. Now before you is a contract amendment to the professional service agreement between DOH Associates and the city for architectural and engineering services for TI Developments. This construction, or this contract amendment will allow for DOH to perform the construction administration services for the third-floor remodel. While Fund 504 will initially fund the CEA efforts, the costs associated with this contract amendment will be reimbursed by the Department of Enterprise Services at the end of the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This is the upstairs?
Upstairs, third floor.
With the Attorney General, except it's not really Attorney General. So, I get a little confused, but then results, this is the one that's, how much is really coming? They're paying how much, like one-point-two million dollars for remodel?
They are, they are paying one-point-two, they're paying one-point-two million dollars for the remodel.
Yeah.
And we are giving them an allowance of twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, this is a definitely win for us, and it's a ten-year lease, I believe. Is that correct?
Correct, with option for extension.
Some other questions for Alyssa?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for a city council to authorize the city administrator to execute the contract amendment with DOH Associates for construction administration services associated with project number twenty-three-twenty-one, Washington State Department of Enterprise Services tenant improvement.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Huffaker and seconded by Councilmember Hornby, is that correct?
Yep.
Oh, thank you. For city council to authorize the city administrator to execute the contract amendment with DOH Associates for construction administration services associated with project number twenty-three-twenty-one, Washington State Department of Enterprise Services tenant improvements. Discussion or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Confluence Parkway, Jake?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here bringing to you, seeking authorization for the city administrator to sign a supplement in the amount of six-point-nine million dollars for owner-adviser services on Confluence Parkway. So, our original agreement, we hired, the city hired Jacobs Engineering to support us in the pursuit of Confluence Parkway as an owner-adviser in December of 2022. The initial scope of work that they did for us was to assess what we had been awarded in the grant and help us with the delivery of, or the selection of a delivery method. Through that process, that's where we ended up with the progressive design-build model, and then they helped us take that to the state to get approval to use design-build for the RCWs. Once we were successful with that, we supplemented the first time to this contract for them to help us in the procurement of a design builder. So, immediately jumped into developing the contract and all those procurement docs, the RFQ, RFP process, and that was kind of a six-month procurement to bring on where we are today with our design builder. We did a no-cost supplement, too, which just added another subconsultant to their team to support them in validating some of the real estate cost estimates we had. So, that was just continuing to refine the estimate. And so, the supplement I'm bringing tonight would extend their contract to July of 2025, and it would really be to support the city through, throughout the design development now that we're in the contract of the design builder. And some of the services that this would include, contract administration, design oversight, the real estate oversight, environmental monitoring and compliance, and then independent cost estimating. So, really, they're augmenting city staff with the additional folks, the expertise, to be monitoring the, what we're getting from the design builder to make sure it's within the, what we expect, within our requirements, quality, and then doing of independent cost estimating along the way, because that is really a critical component of this progressive design build is we're seeking price certainty. So, we'll be, on our side, we'll be cost estimating at the same time as the design builders preparing theirs. So, just a few items, this is within the approved project budget. We, which is funded by, you know, a combination of federal and state grants for both Confluence South and North. Bringing it here just per our financial policy. We do anticipate another future supplement once we get to next summer and ready to move into construction to support us through construction services. And so, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about this contractor supplement.
And Jake did this, did bring this to Finance Committee and explained it very well to us. We appreciate your time doing that, Jake.
I will make a comment, Jake, so you know how, how important this is to everything here. You know, Fourth of July, he worked, he was working here, I believe it was on the Fourth of July weekend at the Confluence Parkway. I mean, there's a lot of dedicated people to make sure we, this goes smoothly, so it's very impressive.
Yes, there's a, there's been a, it's, it's a big team effort. We do have a large team on the project now, and I think, you know, we've been in here before. We have this funding obligation milestone and fully intend to make it, and we've staffed up appropriately, and I think a lot of people are excited about the change to the valley and the region and how important it is. So, it's a fun, exciting project.
Jake, I just want to say I appreciate your work as well, and the entire team. It's, it's a lot, a huge, huge thing, and it's very important to us, so.
And I'm glad that we have your support.
And I'll just say, I want to move for city council to approve and authorize the city administrator to execute supplement number three with Jacobs for additional owner-adviser services for the Confluence Parkway Project, Project Number two-two-zero-one-point-one and two-two-zero-one-point-three.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Harold and seconded by Councilmember Atkinson for city council to approve and authorize the city administrator to execute supplement number three with Jacobs for additional owner-adviser services for the Confluence Parkway Project, Project Number twenty-two-zero-one-point-one and twenty-two-zero-one-point-three. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
And your team. Chief Crown, oh, school resource officer.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Steve Crown, Chief of Police. Matter before you is inter-local agreement between the city of Wenatchee and the Wenatchee School District to provide services for school resource officers. This is an agreement that pays for half of the salaries and benefits over time and incremental pay increases for our officers. This is a longstanding agreement between the city of Wenatchee and the Wenatchee School District. You've seen this agreement in the past. The only things that have changed in this agreement is some not substantial language changes, one of which was, what do we do in a situation where a school resource officer has got a long-term predictable absence? And the other one was some language that was in there from the COVID era that was stripped out of there. There was some back and forth which delayed the signing of this agreement. It's a good idea also when you have leadership changes on both sides with Corey Calhar coming on board as the new superintendent, new mayor. It makes sense to have those two different changes and signatures. So, staff recommends that city council approve the inter-local agreement with the Wenatchee School District and authorize the city administrator to sign the agreement. Happy to answer any questions if you'd like.
Well, it's obviously a program we've been doing for how many years?
Since about 2018.
Yeah, and I, and I know both city of Wenatchee and East Wenatchee, and both school superintendents want to get more involved, more of a region, and this is something that we can continue. It's good, it's good for all of us.
I should correct myself, it actually is, 2019 is when we went from one school resource officer to two. And that, that arrangement's been working really well for both the school district and the city. Definitely, when you start thinking about the volume of kids that are up there and how it works, really nice to have school resource officers, both at the middle school and the high school. That coverage is just so valuable, and we really like the amount of interaction that our officers have with, with all ages of kids. And you can see upon us, see the interaction. The new traffic unit just jumped right in with both feet, so to speak, and, and helped out our school resource officers with a recent event. And that whole unit now is supervised by Sergeant Vasquez. So, the school resource officers have enough flexibility to kind of interact with our traffic unit, and the traffic unit showed up at one of the schools for a minute, so it's, it's a good mix.
Great, we heard nothing but positive feedback, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you for keeping our schools safe. Your whole department, they're doing a heck of a job, thank you.
They do great work.
They do.
Your Honor, I'll move for the city council to approve the inter-local agreement with the Wenatchee School District and authorize the city administrator's signature.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Roger Anastesian and seconded by Councilmember Cuevas for the city council to approve the inter-local agreement with the Wenatchee School District and authorize the city administrator's signature. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed, motion pass. Thanks, Chief. Thank you so much. Captain Chance?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Brian Chance, Captain with Wenatchee Police Department. I'm here to speak with you about an amendment to the inter-local cooperative agreement with the Columbia River Drug Task Force, adding one-crew community corrections specialist from DOC to the task force, and adding Pat Green, the East Unit Supervisor, to the executive board of the task force. Adding DOC brings lots of advantages to the Columbia River Drug Task Force. One of the portions of the mission for the Columbia River Drug Task Force is to apprehend serial offenders, and many of our serial offenders in our community are on DOC or have active DOC warrants. DOC actually has their own dedicated jail space as well, which helps us to find a path around the booking restrictions that we often run into ourselves. And that DOC officer who is assigned to the Columbia River Drug Task Force comes with specialized training in the use of informants, search warrant writing, and service and surveillance techniques. All are things that the, all members of the Columbia River Drug Task Force do on a regular basis. So, I'm here to ask for a motion from the city council to approve amendment to the inter-local cooperative agreement, Columbia River Drug Task Force, and authorize the mayor's signature. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I had a question, and I probably just don't understand. This person that you're adding to the, what is it, executive task, or executive committee or whatever, is that an additional person?
That is an additional person, and they'll have full voting authority and be considered a full member of the Columbia River Drug Task Force.
Okay, and so you guys will probably catch it, but it changes your quorum, right? From, I just was reading this, the quorum's three presently, so it'll go to four, I assume.
That's not something that I, I would assume that as well.
Anyway, just pointing it, I just pointed it out as well, yeah. But I just didn't know if there were still six people or if there were seven, so.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I just wanted to say, I mean, I didn't know that DOC had a jail in there.
I'm sorry?
I did not, I did not know that DOC had a jail in there.
A jail?
Yeah, the, yeah.
They have, so, within the regional jail facility, they actually have ten beds that are reserved specifically for DOC offenders. So, if I was, if I was unclear on that, they, they have ten beds reserved, and as long as there's bed space, then, then they don't need to get authorization from the jail to book the same booking restrictions that don't necessarily apply to them as long as they have the bed space available, which is the advantage that it brings.
So, we reserve the beds, but it's the same jail?
Yes, same jail, just ten beds in our regional jail that are dedicated to DOC offenders.
Entertainer motion?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for city council to approve the amendment to the inter-local cooperative agreement with the Columbia River Drug Task Force and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Huffaker and seconded by Councilmember Harold for city council to approve the amendment to the inter-local cooperative agreement with the Columbia River Drug Task Force and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion or additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass. Thank you, Captain.
Appreciate your time.
Very much. Public Works Director, yay.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Jessica Shaw, Deputy Public Works Director, Public Works Department. And tonight, I have the next two agenda items are inter-local agreements with Douglas County Sewer District. So, this is the first time that we have some cooperative work in between the two agencies, so we're really excited to bring these to you tonight, yay. That, could you bring up the presentation? I also have some fun pictures to show you, too, so.
Sewer fun pictures.
All right.
Don't worry, they won't be too graphic. So, our first agreement, well, oh, thank you, Zach. Well, the pictures are coming up is for our de-camp facility, and so I figure, since we have some new folks tonight, I would share a little bit about the de-camp facility and what goes on down there. So, the type of material we take down there is from cleaning our stormwater system. So, the Vector truck, which you see on the left, cleans out all the stormwater catch basins and pipes. It's a lot of garbage and sand that gets in there after winter, like tonight. And then we also pick up a lot of street sweepings of garbage and leaves, and then the other big source of debris that we take to the de-camp facility to manage is from hydroexcavation, and that's where we use the Vector truck and water to excavate, which is very efficient, helps prevent damage to pipes, and that's what our crew is doing on the far right. They're actually excavating to fix the hydrant, which, as you can see, is a much smaller than having to open up a great big pit. So, lots of efficiencies there, but in the last few years, on average, we've been hauling two-thousand tons a year down to that facility. So, just an interesting fact about how much of that is generated in the valley. So, this is a regional facility. It's owned by the city of Wenatchee and operated by the city, but it was built by a grant and cooperatively through Schlang County, East Wenatchee, Douglas County, and, and city of East Wenatchee, I mentioned that. So, we also have other partners and use agreements, and so tonight, this would be a use agreement for Douglas County Sewer District. And the type of material they would be bringing would be the hydroexcavation. So, this is a picture of our de-camp facility located in South Wenatchee Avenue. Actually, it's kind of hidden down below the avenue by the tracks there, and the picture on the right shows you that when they dump the material out of the truck, there's a lot of water, and so that water kind of makes its way between the ecology blocks, and then we dry the material before it's disposed of, so. Is there any questions about the de-camp facility or the agreement?
Do you know about how much material they plan on bringing? If we're doing two-thousand tons already, plus we've got agreements with other agencies now. How, how close are we getting? Plus, we've got agreements with other agencies now. How, how close are we getting to maxing that facility out?
We aren't there yet, but we're keeping a close eye on it. That's an excellent question. Um, the de-camp facility was designed for all of the users that we have with the exception of Douglas County Sewer District, but the sewer district, we don't anticipate to be a high user of this. Um, actually, the city is the top user of the de-camp facility, followed by, um, East Wenatchee and Douglas County. Um, though we think Schalane PUD will also be a heavy user of the facility. Um, but we have capacity. It's running well. We're looking at making some efficiencies and some improvements to it, so that's part of why collecting these fees from the, from the users and also charging them to manage the waste helps us to kind of reinvest back into that facility and, and keep it, keep it functioning well, so. Um, yeah, so with the agreement, they will pay us twenty-four hundred dollars a year, but I don't anticipate that they'll have many uses. It'll be primarily if they have a sewer main break or something that they need to bring some of the dirt from that excavation.
And, and if we needed to, do we have room to expand a little bit?
We don't have too much room to expand, but we do have the ability with these use agreements that if the city's use of it and the county, those are the two priority agencies where the actual partners in it, we can ask these users to find somewhere else to take their waste, so.
And where does it go from here, then?
Good question. So from here, it goes to the landfill.
How, how old is this facility?
It was completed in twenty fifteen.
Not without issues.
Correct.
But it's been a great facility once we got the kinks worked out.
Yep.
And we've been hoping for a long time to get the region to share with us on it, and so this is, this is a a party celebration moment, for sure.
How about a motion by the party, party celebration or?
I'll move that the city council approved the interlocal agreement with Douglas County Sewer District number one for testing service. Am I reading the right one? Nope, the one up above, isn't it? Douglas County Sewer District number one and authorize the city administrator's signature. Do I need to read that again?
No.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Atkinson and seconded by council member Hornby for city council to approve the Wenatchee Valley Regional Decant Facility Use Agreement with Douglas County Sewer District number one and authorize city administrator's signature. Um, discussion or comments? I, Jessica, I, I'm always so impressed with how much, uh, work you can accomplish uh, during your time, timeframe, your, uh, the word comes like dynamite to, to me, yeah. That's a definitely a compliment, but any other discussion? Comments?
Better than sewer.
Uh, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion pass. Thank you so much.
Yep.
You get the next one.
I get the next one. So again, uh, Douglas County Sewer District interlocal agreement. This one is actually for, uh, sharing our drying bed facility, which we just completed an expansion of, so we're very excited. Um, back in the early nineties, the county and the city and Solid Waste Advisory Committee dreamed that the drying bed facility would be a regional facility as well, and so um, with your approval tonight, that may be possible, that this is now a regional, uh, facility, so um, Douglas County Sewer District, um, and actually, if we go to the next slide, oh, that's me, sorry, Zach. So the wastewater treatment plant drying beds facility is located out near Malaga. And from the aerial photo, you can see it's a super exciting place. It's mostly, when we say beds, we mean great big asphalt parking lots with concrete walls around the outside. And this summer, we doubled the capacity, cause as you can see, we're, we're using a lot of it. And so now that we've doubled the size of it, we have room to allow the Douglas County Sewer District to also use it on an as-needed basis. And so within this agreement, they'll pay twenty-four hundred dollars a year to choose to use the facility. And if they choose to bring biosolids, they'll pay three thousand dollars a month for rental of one of our drying beds. And probably the m- more likely use of the facility will be, um, at the top of the aerial photo, you see kind of a little, um, U-shaped area. We've doubled the size of that, and that's actually our de-camp area for the sewer vector waste. So talked about the stormwater vector waste, that's all the sand and stuff we get off the roads. Well, from the sewer system, when we clean the sewer system, there's a lot of garbage that we pick up. And that, we take all the way out to Malaga for odor reasons, and we dry it out, and then it goes to the landfill, so. Um, Douglas County Sewer District needed a place so that they can clean their sewer system, and we now have two of these drying areas out at our drying beds, and so they will be using that primarily, and they'll pay a hundred, under ninety dollars a trip for every trip they go out with their vector truck, so. Um, is there any questions I can answer about our drying bed facility or the agreement with Douglas County Sewer District?
I just think it's really cool, and when you showed us the, the stuff that comes from it last year, that was, that was really nice. No, but, uh, but yeah, I'll, uh, your honor, I'll move for the city council to approve the interlocal agreement with Douglas County Sewer District number one for testing services and drying bed facility use and authorize the city administrator's signature.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Roger Anastesian and seconded by council member Hornby for city council to approve the interlocal agreement with Douglas County Sewer District number one for testing services and drying bed facility use and authorize the city administrator's signature. Any other comments or discussions?
It's turned into a revenue stream. Nice work.
Yay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries?
Thank you so much.
Finance Director. Well, I'm sure this will be exciting.
Yeah, uh.
That's our ongoing joke. It's like, if I wanna get bored or I can't sleep, I just go listen to Brad. Lots of numbers.
Brad talking about financial policies, that, how more, how much more exciting can it be? Um, good evening, Mayor and Council, Brad Posenjack, Finance Director. Um, tonight we've got three separate motions for two ordinances and a resolution uh, to update our financial policies, which will help us gain some efficiencies, um, and, uh, some pre- uh, inner processes. Uh, last fall, the council adopted a few ordinances that, uh, changed some of the administrative functions a little bit. And so the original intent was to update our policies so that different approval levels would, would follow with those ordinances. Um, what, what those ordinances prescribed. As we started digging into it, um, we saw that there were a couple of things in, uh, that by adjusting some of the financial policies, we need to adjust some of the city code. Uh, and so it ended up becoming a little bit more complicated than what I had originally hope, hoped. Um, so the, trying to explain the couple ordinances and then the resolution for the financial policy manual. Uh, the first ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-four dash oh one, it repeals chapter one point ten of the city code. Uh, this chapter had already been slimmed down in twenty seventeen when we adopted the financial policy manual. Uh, everything in this chapter, except the city's office hours, actually are better suited to be in the financial policy manual. Um, it, the first ordinance also updates our check signing authority, um, that's in chapter one point thirty. I guess thirty-five years ago, when this was adopted, the city actually manually signed all our checks and had two signatures on them. Um, nowadays, uh, the signatures are printed on the checks. Um, they're just embedded into our accounting system. Um, like I think a lot of them are, and there really is no need for two signatures for security purposes or internal control purposes. Um, we have plenty of compensating internal controls, um, and plenty of eyes on it, that it doesn't require two signatures. Um, we've talked with the bank, they don't require two signatures. Um, it was just sort of a preference of the city thirty-five years ago, and now um, it's easier to update, uh, when we have turnover in staff or, uh, like, or the mayor to just have one person on it. So it'll be the finance director's signature on it. Um, and, uh, I think, let's see, moving into the second ordinance, um, twenty twenty-four dash oh two, oh, sorry, I guess I jumped ahead. Um, I was thinking that one changed the signature authority, but it is the first ordinance that also has, um, it's gonna change from, it used to be the mayor, finance director, and assistant finance director had signature authority on her bank accounts. Now it's the city administrator, the finance director, and the assistant finance director. Um, and some of that is in response to those ordinances that were passed in the fall. Um, and it's just helpful to have, um, city staff in case something happens. Um, not that it, sorry, I'm, I'm not gonna use that example I used earlier. Um, it is, it is nicer to have, uh, uh, have city staff who can, um, run over to the bank, um, and are here most of the time. Uh, but again, it would really not change any of the processes because it's one printed signature on the checks at this point. Um, uh, the second ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-four dash oh two, it moves that section about the city office hours to a different section in city code, um, because I don't think we like to have a chapter that only has one subsection in it. So, uh, we're moving that to a different spot, but the wording is still the same. So the, uh, nothing with the office hours are actually changing, it's just relocated in city code. Then the third motion is resolution twenty twenty-four dash one, and it adopts a financial policy and procedure ma- manual. And as mentioned in the agenda report, um, the main updates, like kinda high level, section one dot one, it updates, it has updates to authorize signing authority, uh, for purchasing and the addition of administrative settlement thresholds. Section one point five, um, it, it is the inclusion of a compost procurement policy that was originally adopted by ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-six. Um, this was a requirement by Washington State Legislature. Uh, section two point two updates the travel approval authority. Um, it re- also removes the requirement for the mayor to pre-approve out-of-state travel. Um, that's been a process pet peeve of mine for quite a while, um, because we have plenty of approvals in that process anyway. Uh, section three point four increases, uh, our minimum fund balance policy from fifteen percent uh, to twenty-five percent of annual expenses, uh, which we are already well there. Uh, it also increases the minimum rainy day fund balance from one million to one point five million. Um, and that rainy day fund is already, uh, funded at one point six million, so this is just adjusting our policy kinda up to where we are currently, um, and kinda maybe holds our, it hold, holds our feet to our, to the fire to keep us at that level, and, um, which I think are honestly the rainy day fund. Um, uh, the, the, the more the merrier, uh, when it comes to recession, recession-proofing the city. Uh, section three point five incorporates credit card policies that were previously in the city code but are now being moved into the policy manual. Um, uh, so I, I do wanna mention also that Finance Committee reviewed this early last week. Um, there were a couple of comments, and we made a couple of changes, um, before, before that made it into your council packet. Uh, so the, the document in your council packet is, is the corrected version. Um, in the previous version, the main difference that we talked about at Finance Committee was, uh, for purchasing, purchasing contract, uh, signing authority, uh, for the fifty to a hundred thousand level. Um, it had said the city administrator, um, with Finance Committee approval, I believe that was the wording. Um, and that is now, that was changed back to mayor or designate, um, so it's kinda back to the original form on that one. Um, and then, as, uh, we were reviewing it more, our legal counsel said that we had a couple places in there that talked about Finance Committee approval, and it really should be more Finance Committee review cause it's not an approving body. Um, so those are really the changes, um, that we looked at since, uh, since the Finance Committee.
Yeah, that Finance Committee meeting was, was good because we got to review it and look at some changes and go through the process to get some things taken care of, so. And I joked earlier, but I, most of my time, it's because of me talking with Brad, it's, uh, probably spent a hundred hours in the last month, I guess, with him, so, um. Anyway, then also, I, I, I remember there's a plan, like if we go below a certain amount, we just, it doesn't mean we can't do it. We can, we just have to put a plan in place to say, okay, how do we get that reserve back? Is, could you explain a little bit?
Yeah, so our minimum, our minimum fund balance policy, uh, would, if this is adopted, would be twenty-five percent of our recurring expenses. So if our budget is, I'm gonna try to make the math simple for me, if our budget is thirty million, that, which is basically thirty million, um, that means that we need to have a reserve of seven and a half million, and that would be our minimum. And so if for any reason, uh, we dip below that seven and a half million dollar reserve, um, our policy says that we would come up with a plan, the city council through our budget process, would come up with a plan to replenish that up to that twenty-five percent reserve within two years. Um, so it's about pla- it's about planning, so there are times where maybe that would happen. Uh, right now, we are expecting to end the year with a fourteen million, uh, reserve. And as far as cash flow purposes and flexibility for the city, um, I'm hoping we keep it around there even a little bit, little bit better. Um, so right now, we are sitting close to, uh, fifty percent reserve. So this policy really is just, um, it's just sorta up, up in the, up in the ante from. Uh, there, there was a time where the city was, uh, struggling for that fifteen percent minimum fund balance. Um, and so it is nice that we are well over that, um, and that's one of the reasons having that lower fifteen percent. If we, if we truly had a fifteen percent, uh, reserve today, and then went into a recession like we had in two thousand nine, we'd be in the same spot of layoffs that we had in, in two thousand nine. Um, however, with a fifty percent plus that rainy day fund, um, if we had a recession like we had in oh nine, um, we should, we'd be able to weather it, um, we'd, we would spend down our reserves, maybe we would come close to that twenty-five per, fifteen or twenty-five percent reserve. Um, maybe we would come close to that, but we would be able to weather something, something like that without having a, without having to lay, have layoffs like we did before. So that's sort of the goal of all of that rainy day planning and the, uh, minimum fund balance planning.
Thanks, Brad. Other, a couple of other questions for Brad, comments?
I just wanted to make a comment that we've also got some fairly big projects on the horizon that we're in the middle of, and we know how those can go. There's some times where we're gonna have to, uh, take out of our own pocket until we get reimbursed by the state or for whatever reason, so.
Exactly.
With that said, I will make a motion for the city council to adopt A, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero one, repealing chapter one point ten and amending section one point thirty point zero two zero of the Wenatchee City Code relating to finances. B, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash two, adding sections one point zero eight point zero two zero to the Wenatchee City Code relating to office hours. And lastly, resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero one, amending and restating the city's financial policy and procedure manual.
Second. We have a motion by council member Huffaker and seconded by councilman Atkinson for city council to adopt A, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero one repealing chapter one point one zero and amending section one point three zero point zero two zero of the Wenatchee City Code relating to city finances. B, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero two, adding section one point zero eight point zero two zero to the Wenatchee City Code relating to office hours. And finally, resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero one, amending and restating the city's financial policy and procedure. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, motion pass. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Now you get the next one.
Yeah, so this item is, um, for Keshmer Valley Bank. Um, they, when, when we, uh, update our banking signature authority, they want to have it as part of the minutes. Um, they wanna be able to see the minutes of the, our meeting minutes showing that the change in signature authority. Um, I would have had this on as a consent item, but because the policy manual was gonna change a couple of, a couple details about that, um, we just brought it after, uh, so why, cause I asked to remove the prior mayor from our bank account, and so they said we needed it in the mid, meeting minutes, so this was the first opportunity we had. So this motion, um, would just memorialize revoking any prior banking signature authority and then, um, specifically adding, uh, the city administrator, finance director, and current assistant finance director to that.
Entertainer motion or questions, Brad?
Your honor, I will move for city council to revoke prior banking signature authority and authorize the following individuals' banking signature authority. Laura Gloria, City Administrator, Brad Posenjack, Finance Director, Lisa Johnson, Assistant Finance Director.
Second. We have a motion by council member Harold and seconded by council member Cuevas for the city council to revoke prior banking signature authority and authorize the following individuals' banking signature authority. Laura Gloria, City Administrator, Brad Posenjack, Finance Director, and Lisa Johnson, Assistant Finance Director. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Engineering Services Manager. Oh, Ryan. So, is this a long one, Ryan?
It is not very long. I can be quick.
I, I think I'm gonna stand up. I don't know if anybody else wants to stand up for a minute or not. Or you can go if you don't mind, just stand it up. I just wanna stretch for a minute.
Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Ryan Harmon, Engineering Services Manager. I'm here to, today, um. To request an approval of a project budget amendment and authorize the city administrator to exec- execute supplement one with Exel Tech Consulting. For our south end bike and pedestrian access bridges project. I have a quick presentation, um, just to highlight where we're at, um, and what we're looking at doing in the future. Um, so just as a refresher, this project was included in the infra ward to, same with the Confluence Parkway, uh, project that Jake shared before. Um, with this, we'll be putting a new pedestrian and bicycle bridge over VNSF railroad and Sunset Highway, um, in East Wenatchee. The goals were to remove the existing railroad barrier for South Wenatchee neighborhoods, provide continuous north-south cycling. And walking route on dedicated right away, that being loop trail, and then also to provide east-west connectivity over the Columbia River. This was a large part of the infra award. Very important, um, as far as the full infra dollars. Back in April, we got approval to select Exel Tech Consulting to perform the work with a slew of sub consultants. RH2 Aspect, Ocetera, EcoAssets, Michael Miner Associates and Northwest Geodimensions, um, most of which are pretty local. Um, in June, they got started, um, and have been well underway since then. In that, we have completed environmental permitting, or we've got environmental permitting turned in, we've completed alternative analysis. We went before the Public Services Committee meeting, or in September of twenty-three. And came up with these preferred alternatives. What you can see here is the east bridge. Um, so the left side of your screen is where the existing pedestrian bridge comes in. There's a plaza there with little planters. At that point is where the curve comes around. All, it'll go over the existing trail and then over the highway and then it'll be an additional bridge where it will land at. The um, Ninth Street Park in East Wenatchee. Here's some uh, conceptual views of it to better picture it. And so this was the prefer, preferred alternative at the time. Also, moving forward into our approach. What we've got showing here at the bottom of your screen is where the existing pedestrian bridge is. It'll bridge over VNSF right away, little racetrack, um, circular ramp down. And then there'll also be the large, long ramp on the backside of Hale Park that'll tie into the loop trail. It'll um, change the behavior of the loop trail. Um, it'll put people back on the backside of the park. Um, and it'll change that primary access to the dog park will be the, what currently functions as the primary loop trail. Here's some renderings to help illustrate that a little bit as well. Moving into schedule, the green, vertical green line is where we're at now. Um, as you can see, we've completed alternative development. We've screened them and selected, we've got preliminary did not, design, thirty percent design is completed. It's been submitted to WashDOT for a review, it's been submitted to the railroad for their review. Um, we've also got, yes, all of our environmental documentation completed and submitted. Um, we're now ready to move forward, get into that last pieces of design and hit our obligation deadline of September this year. And then our construction is expected to take place starting in spring of twenty-five and continue through to the fall or winter of twenty-six. As I mentioned before, we are looking for a budget amendment, bringing the total budget up to seventeen million dollars. Of that, sixteen point three will be through grants, the infra grant, STBG. TA CRP, I'm gonna forget what those two acronyms are. And then also a contribution from the city of East Wenatchee. We currently do have a grant request in through the U N- US DOT. They have a reconnecting communities and neighborhood grant, um, that we're looking to bring in that allow us to. Transfer some funds back into south and also really bolster and allow us to do some of the really fun, uh, extra pieces with the project. And then with that, I also would ask for any questions.
I don't have any questions, just comments. This is really exciting, connecting communities. More healthy, more vibrant communities, uh, we're, we're better off with more trails, more access, so this is great. Thanks for all your effort. I know, we've seen many renditions and this is way more pleasant to the eye, way more, less impactful, so I appreciate your additional effort into that.
Well, I appreciate it. I also did wanna acknowledge, I did not make it in front of Finance Committee last week. I did come to the Public Services Committee this afternoon. Um, just wanted to mention that.
It, it should be noticed also that, uh, we meet with Mayor Crawford, the city of East Wenatchee and their staff. And so we're bringing them right along with this cuz obviously it's a, like you said, a joint venture. So is this design finalized now, or are we waiting to hear back from all the other entities before we move forward?
This is what has been selected and what we're planning on moving forward with.
And concur to council member Hornby, it's gonna be a safer route too for pedestrians crossing, going either direction. It's gonna look great.
Your Honor, I will make a motion for the city council to approve the project budget amendment and authorize the city administrator to execute supplement number one. With uh, exit, how do you say this? Consulting Inc. for design services on the south end slash pedestrian access bridge. Project number, uh, two thousand two hundred and one point two pending WashDOT concurrent.
Second. Alright, we have a motion by council member Hornby and second by council member Cuevas for city council to approve the project budget amendment. And authorize the city administrator to execute supplement number one with Exel Tech Consulting Incorporated for design services on the south end. Bike head access bridge, project number twenty-two zero one dot two pending. Washington State Department of Transportation concurrents. Any discussion or comments?
Just one comment, Ryan, if you wouldn't mind, could you send us this PowerPoint? Your PowerPoint here is a lot easier to see those details than what we got in our packet.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Provide that.
Yeah, for fun, ca- uh, how hard is it to put stuff like this, uh, on a, our website and, or a link to it or something?
That is a great reminder for me to reach out to Anna Carr and get that included on our website.
I think that'd be fun because then we can promote it and, you know, show all the positive things, so. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion pass. Reports. Let's see, I do wanna make a comment, Chief Crown, he's not here, but they did have a, at the PIVS. Uh, both, uh, police chiefs and, um, sheriffs from Schland Douglas County last night. And, uh, attendance, I'm, I'm guessing a hundred or so and it was, uh, it was good to, to see. That, again, regional, I think that's a, a big key for us to continue that support. So I wanna recognize Chief Crown and he did a great job recruiting, trying to recruit more than the other guys. But they're all on the same page about how we help out when we're in trouble, you know, or they're in trouble to help out other jurisdictions. So I thought that was great. We also had a very successful, I thought, meet and greet more. Uh, Laura said, I was in my element. I, I really enjoyed it. I enjoyed talking to people and. It was a, it was a meet and greet, uh, for, for obviously to promote our District Two. And we had one application and I think we have three or four now and I know we're getting a couple more. And, uh, it's, it's great to see that participation. It was one, it was really wonderful to, and, and I think, I can't remember if it was council member Cuevas or not, but they said, why'd you keep pushing somebody over to me? I said, it's cuz I wanna have them feel what it's like for each city council person cuz every person here has a different perspective. And I thought that was such a, a impressive, impressive thing, so. Uh, Laura, can you help me out with a couple of the things, uh, that's we've been doing?
Happy to. Um, and just as a reminder, um, for the District Two, those applications close tomorrow. So if you do have anyone else that might be interested or was interested, if you nudge them or for the public that's listening, um, tomorrow by five o'clock, please. Um, this Saturday is the Wenatchee Valley Uplift Award, so this is a program that the city's been, um, perf- uh, implementing for quite some time. Along with the, uh, Wenatchee Valley Museum and Cultural Center and the NCW Equity Alliance. Um, it's at the Annual Multicultural Fest, so that's at the museum on Saturday from ten to three. The program is at two. It is a really fun event, uh, lots of families, lots of different dancing and, um, and booths. So I'd encourage you to come if you're available. I would love to celebrate the person to my right, I know she's paying, not paying attention right now. But, uh, Tammy received her Master Municipal Clerk certification, which is, um, a lot of work. So just wanted to highlight that, you know, that continues to add to the level of professionalism and training that we have, um, in our, in our city, citywide. So definitely wanted to recognize that amount of work that went into that.
And just to clarification, she wasn't not paying attention, she was taking notes.
And then the last item, just sort of a housekeeping item, the, um, agenda packet now has the ability that if you click the title. It'll take you to the, um, place where the, the agenda and all of the documents start. Um, so if you notice that, that's in the packet version, if you're just downloading the agenda, the two pages or three pages, it doesn't do that. But if you d- download the packet, you should be able to click on the third item and then it'll scoot you right to where that starts, so. Um, if you haven't, um, tried that out already, please do, but again, it's hopefully to get that information to you guys a little bit quicker. I don't have any other items, unless there's something else you would like me to share?
Like, uh, our, I know our council have been busy, so let's hear it. What's going on?
Well, I don't have any council-related things, but I wanted to let you know that, uh. Uh, our niece actually works at Valley Academy of Learning and they're gonna be sending us a personal invitation. For a presentation that they're going to do. It's Imagine the City a hundred years from now. Uh, so we should be receiving, uh, invites. They're actually gonna do two different times. One on January thirty-first at two and one, uh, February first at one o'clock. Those are the preliminary things and this is actually exclusively for us, for council members. So, we should be seeing those and, uh, she just asked me if I'd put a bug in your ear about it and they're pretty excited to do this presentation.
We, we wanna encourage. E- everybody, if they, if they can help us know when things advance are going on, to encourage to, uh, to go reach out and listen. And I think that's important, so, um, everybody, um, keep doing, doing those type of things, you know. I know Charlie, you've been, it's fairly new, but you've been going, uh, to every department head and learning more and more. I don't know if you wanna talk a little bit about that?
I'll say thanks again, Laura, for setting those up and for all of you on staff that have met with me and, uh. And appreciate you being there, Mike, and, uh, yeah, so thank you and other council members. I've felt very welcomed and, uh, learned a lot, have a lot to learn. I'll try not to blow my next motion, but, yeah, you know, yeah.
Uh, I just have, um, one thing, talking about the Police Department of the City Wenatchee. Uh, PIVS had a New Year's Eve celebration down there and, um, they showed up, um, four of them. They interacted with the public, they handed out stickers, um, they were laughing and they actually joined, um, and took a picture together in our photo booth. So Chief Crown has that. Um, they even posed and were a little bit silly. So that was, uh, extremely enjoyable from, uh, my perspective to see them down there, but the public really enjoyed having them down there during the, um, the celebration. So I think roughly we had over a thousand people, if you count the ones that were inside of the restaurant. And the ones that are hanging out in the concourse and in the event center for the kids' games, so that was a wonderful experience and the extra effort for them to come down and make a presence was appreciated.
You have anything, Todd?
I, um, uh, will be attending City Action Days for Association of Washington Cities, February seventh and eighth. And if you wanted to go and you didn't register, you're too late. It is sold out and there's a waiting list, but you can put your name on the list. And I, I just bring it up because mostly I'd like our new council members, especially Charlie, to think about going to the conference in June. You will learn a lot and I find it very educational and very helpful in the work here. Also, they are, um. I don't know if they've redone it or what, but they're pushing their certificate of, um, municipal leadership certificate again. And it's something that you can, a lot of it you can do online just by doing the webinars that are online. Some of it, you have to attend their conference or meetings, um, but it's very educational and very helpful. Also, there will be a, um, homeless task for, Columbia River Homeless Task Force meeting on January thirtieth.
Any other announcements?
I'll be on vacation starting next Wednesday till the twenty-eighth, so I'll be out of town for the next meeting. Glad to join by phone if, if needed or.
Alright, we'll let you know. I don't think there's any other announcements. Tomorrow, make the best day ever tomorrow. That's how I'm gonna end it. This meeting's adjourned.